Yeah, just this morning. Alright, we have two o'clock, so I'll call this meeting to order. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I don't know why it says something.
Yeah, I lost internet for some reason.
Do you want to talk about stuff or?
Whatever you want me to do.
You can probably explain it.
Okay, so last year when you guys reduced Doug's budget, the amount that was certified to the Department of Management for revenues based on the levy was two million, I don't even have that amount, two million thirty-eight thousand some odd dollars. That was what the levy was approved at for the Department of Management. And that was put on the resolution that you approved on July, the first meeting in July of twenty twenty-four. Sorry, twenty twenty-three. So that's the amount that was put on the worksheets when we do transfers. Unfortunately, that's not the same amount you budgeted in his line item. The amount that was budgeted in his line item was one point nine. So when we went to do transfers, we're over the amount that's allowed, that's in his budget, not the amount that was certified with the Department of Management. So you can do one of two things. You can either reverse the amount that we have transferred and then transfer the correct amount, or you can increase the operating transfers because it's a transfer, it can be increased and nothing has to be done with the Department of Management per Kerry Johnson. So if you increase the operating transfers, you do it by resolution, and that would be in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. So you would have to decide one of those two things. If not, it will have a negative balance in the operating transfers at the end of the year.
So we need to do one of the two?
Yes.
Any thoughts from the board?
Well, that's for next year's budget.
Yeah, the other conversation we had for that, which?
That's for Tuesday's meeting, for when we do the resolution Tuesday.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes.
We're talking about this twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
The one we're in currently.
And if we would transfer one hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, it would be the correct amount that we had.
That Department of Management, not that we?
That Department of Management had.
Yes, well, the revenue, yeah.
So what we said earlier, if we follow the budget numbers, it would be reversing the transfers and correcting that. So either, either way, it should be consistent between both years, I would say, but.
Doug, this is your budget. What do you think?
Before it needs, I'm just gonna make a statement. On March sixth of twenty twenty-three, county board supervisors decided to take over the secondary road budget. Due to lack of communication with the county auditor, lack of communication with county engineer, fiscal year twenty-four has been a nightmare. We don't know what was approved, what was not approved. So you guys make your decision and I'll live with it.
Any preference as far as if we go with the levy rate or the budgeted amount? We said earlier, we were gonna use the budgeted amount, so.
Can Amber ask a question?
I'm just trying to understand it, so I'm not mixed up. So the amount that was levied is less than or more than the amount that was actually transferred?
More than, well, that was transferred? There was more transferred than that was, was, no. It's less than what was levied, but more than what was budgeted.
Okay.
So what was, what was transferred now was based on the levy amount, and the levy amount was higher than what was budgeted.
Okay, so then when you talk about the levy, levy amount, is that the amount that Doug gives you at budget time? The sheet that says the levy amount and the amount to be transferred? Okay, so what changed from that time to now, just so I have it clear in my mind?
The board changed his budget.
How did what got put in Department of Management, how could that be different than what was in the budget?
We're, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about the revenue side and expenditure side.
Right.
So it's just the expenditure side that was put in at the lower amount.
So he budgeted more revenue?
Than the board.
Than the board.
Approved expenditures.
Okay. Can I ask why that was done? Like, why, why was that done? I mean, that would mess up a person's budget in a hurry. Why was that done?
A few board members that wanted to change his budget.
Did he know about it? Okay.
So if we go to the levy, go to the levy amount, that's gonna be what was approved, that he put in for a levy amount that will fix it?
For the revenue amount, yes. The expenditure amount is not the same. But when it comes to operating transfers on the Department of Management's side, Kerry Johnson said that that can be increased without having to do an amendment or changing anything with the Department of Management.
So what, so we don't have to do any, what, so you said that the expenses, so the expenses gotta be changed too?
Well, his budgeted operating transfers, my amount would have to be increased if you decide to set it at what you based the levy on, or what the levy amount was.
That would be the best fix for you, like that, going to the levy amount?
Again, you guys, it really doesn't affect secondary roads, because we're talking about revenue. When I look at, when I, when, when I'm looking at my budget, I look at my expenditures. I don't spend a penny over what the expenditures are. Revenue comes in, whether it's road use tax, whether it's estimated miscellaneous income. There's revenues are not something that, as long as I'm getting, as long as the road department is getting revenue, we're fine.
So to be consistent across this and what we'll talk about next Tuesday, if we go with the budgeted amount, that would be a higher dollar figure?
That would be two million thirty-eight thousand.
No, it'd be a higher dollar figure total. It would be a reduction in the current fiscal year, but it would be an increase in the next because of that four hundred thousand dollar difference. We were talking this morning, right?
I'm confused at what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm confused too.
I am as well, because this morning, when, if, if you're alluding to when the county engineer was visiting with the board of supervisors this morning, if that's what you're alluding to, I was talking about fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Right now, my understanding is we're talking about fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Correct.
Correct.
So they have no, one budget is one budget, one budget is a different budget.
My point was being consistent across the two years on which line we are going to use.
So you're saying, because this morning you said you had to stick with the amount budgeted, you wanna do the same with this, because this was the amount budgeted. Is that what you're saying?
Kind of, yeah.
Amber has a question.
Oh, Amber.
So when a change like that's made and Doug didn't know about it, did all five board members know about this change? And did, was it acted upon with all five of you? What board meeting was that done at?
Well, this would have been our budget workshops and all that a full year plus ago.
Okay, but did all five board, I'm just asking the question. Did all five board members know that this change was going to take place?
In the twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah, I know that's really asking you to go back, but you guys all knew about it and agreed upon it?
We didn't all agree on it, but we knew about it.
You knew, okay. Knew about it through discussions in a budget workshop?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we support the majority of the board's decision.
So was it voted upon? It wasn't voted upon?
The total budget was, we disagreed, but we have to support the budget.
Okay, okay.
You know what we're coming?
I was just curious when and how the change took place.
Yeah. I don't think it's advantageous for the board to be critical of something that the majority get.
You guys are kinda going back and forth a little bit and talking about different fiscal years. Can you, can you kind of boil it down again, just to clarify what exactly happened? And how much money we're talking?
So this is, this is just in regards to how much money would be transferred from rural basic to secondary road. We're talking one hundred and twenty-five, that's a figure, roughly one hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that's the difference in the levy rate that was submitted to the Department of Management and the transfers that were in the budget, so.
So right now, the amount that was transferred is the levy rate?
No, we haven't transferred all of it yet. We, we were just negative, so we stuck, you know, stopped, so no.
Yep.
Okay, just so, so the levy amount will cover that one hundred and twenty-five thousand when you increase the amount transferred? Or do we have, we don't have case, so?
You can do it either way. You can, you can move it up to the amount of the levy rate, or, which not all of that has been transferred yet, so, or you can just reverse the transfers that have already been made to put it back to what was budgeted.
It would, it would just impact fund balance, right?
So which, which is the simplest way, just increase it, just decrease it?
We can do that with some promotion count.
Well, they're, no, they're, they're both resolutions.
Both resolutions?
They're both.
They're both resolutions, yep. And Kerry Johnson said you could do it either way.
Which is the cleanest, most true.
I hate to say it, but I don't know. You budgeted one number, you proved a resolution for the budgeted amount for another, so I, I don't, that has to be your decision.
Well, if the levy amount, if the levy is enough to cover, is, is, is what, is that an extra? That one hundred and twenty-five thousand, I just, I'd say just increase the amount of the transfers.
That's increasing the amount that you budgeted, so the amount that was budgeted from last year will be incorrect.
So then do we have to do, well, we don't have time to do a question then?
Because you don't have to, because it's an operating transfer.
So what you're saying is better, it'd be better to do a resolution reversing the operating transfers or go for reversal then?
Nothing, it just goes, we just go back and reverse it back into the fund and then issue the correct amount. It's just a transfer from one fund to the other.
Here's what you're saying, it's just doing the transferring amount. Doesn't sound like you think, you're like, that's very clean. Something you're saying is, is to reverse the, reverse the operating transfers.
I can't tell you what to do, Jack. I, that's a decision you have to make.
Okay, and we don't have numbers on either one of these? Because we'll just, we'll put a number on it when we make a motion, right?
You mean resolution number?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't know what we were gonna have this morning when there was gonna be any resolutions from Doug, so I did put one on.
And this would be the first one for today, right? Okay, well, I would, I would make a motion for this resolution to reverse the transfers and do the correct amount, or the budgeted amount, which would be resolution zero-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, zero-one, right?
Would that, that, that's still moving that extra one hundred and twenty-five thousand into, it's not just?
No, no, it would, it would put it to the budgeted amount for the total, which is what we gave. Yeah.
I'm still, you're confusing me again, because I thought the budget's amount was, was the levy amount, which is that one hundred and twenty-five thousand?
That's the difference between the two. They, they should have been the same, I'm, yeah. But there's motion on the floor. Is there a second? And then we could have further discussion.
I'll second the discussion.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions, comments?
So is it taking one hundred and twenty-five thousand revenue away from me, or no?
No.
No. It would, it would, the end result of this would give him the same revenue that was budgeted.
It is, is taking, right, it is taking some that we gave to him, but according to his budget, it should not have been given.
So it'll affect your, your budget cut down?
He's gonna have one hundred and twenty-five thousand less dollars.
No, not than what was budgeted, no. Right now, he has more than what he budgeted.
Correct.
I, I don't know, I'm honestly, I, or maybe if somebody would read the resolution you're considering, it may help.
Yep, I can read that. So this says, whereas section three thirty-one, four twenty, or four thirty-two of the Iowa code requires the board supervisors to authorize the transfer of funds by resolution. Be it resolved, board supervisors authorized, is to reverse the following operating transfer in FY twenty-four. From rural basic to secondary road in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents and one hundred and forty-six thousand four forty-five and sixty-two cents.
And then we, after that, we would issue the correct.
The budgeted total, right? Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is the budgeted total then? If you take away the, your, in your resolution, you, you talk about taking from rural basic, eliminating the transfers that were made. One was made in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And the second transfer that was made in, for a hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. So you're gonna be removing those or deleting those transfers? What would be the correct, what would be the amount that would get transferred then?
Whatever that correct amount is to the one hundred and ninety-nine. The reason we have to remove both is because the twenty-one thousand dollar one came after. So that one's not enough to, to reverse the overage, so we had to take.
But there will still be some sort of a transfer.
Right, but we don't need a resolution for that, because that would be a normal.
But you don't know what that dollar amount is?
Not off the top of my head, but I could look for you. I didn't bring my phone, so I have to find a calculator.
If I could see what that number is.
So.
Do you want to mention, or you wanna read it to me?
No, will I get it pointed out? So take. Okay. So we've transferred this one, so take two, zero. That should come out to there.
Yeah, well, I think.
Right.
So yeah, we're, we're over, we're over a hundred and two thousand. Forty-four, four seventy-four, forty-two cents.
Those two together.
So, um, oh, this is not the, here in this. Twenty-one, nine seventy-one. Equals minus. So the, um.
So we'd be taking away one sixty-eight, four seventeen, fifty-six, and we'd be reissuing sixty-five, nine forty-three, fourteen.
So it's different.
More or less taking away a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. But that would put it to what was budgeted, which is what we had talked about previously. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
No.
Wacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Plath?
What they gonna do in your budget, Doug?
I have an imbalance higher than what I anticipated. I did not spend, secondary road department expenditures were not every penny this fiscal year.
Already going to the fiscal year, so when did your first transfer go through?
Well, I got road use tax funds and we, I got, I mean, my balances right now in cash, we began June with five and a half million.
And the new budget is just gonna be, he's gonna get more money than what he got this year.
Um, I don't know about that.
But that's what they said.
Two point four.
I think that's, might be a little less than what?
You should have.
Less?
This year, it's two point six.
And you're gonna add two point four next year.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think that this revenue coming out is.
And there's a million dollars lost on top of that.
So, so I'm close to the next fiscal year, I would guess.
Alright, motion carries three to one. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, go ahead, let them. I wanna bring it to the board's attention, how important it is to communicate with department heads when you're discussing budgets. And I would just ask during your budget, your budget workshops, that you actually listen to us, department heads, and not just go and make decisions. The county auditor and the county engineer need to both be present when secondary road budget decisions are made. I've talked about it before. Secondary roads, there's a budget that is run through the Iowa Department of Transportation, and there's the county budget, and they need to be the same. And for whatever reason, a year and a half ago, no communication, changes were made, no communication. And that is the truth. I was in Ames, Iowa on March sixth of twenty twenty-three. It's hard when the county engineer is not present to be able to, for the board to see if we make this decision, what's the consequence? This year, the secondary road budget was turned into the DOT. It was approved by the board of supervisors, and two weeks later, the board changed their budget again. That makes it difficult. That's why we, next Tuesday, we, the board, secondary road department, we act again. And I'm not sure if what's gonna happen on July second is even gonna be worth a week's of time, weeks amount of time. I asked the board this morning, could not get an answer. It, it makes it difficult. It makes it difficult to run a budget. Lack of communication, you gotta communicate with us, so I would just ask that.
We have, we have to ask a question that, we know we talked about this before, but does this affect the road use tax money? Because there has to be a certain amount of local, local effort.
Local effort, there was an amendment to transfer more money. Originally, local effort was not going to be made in the twenty-four.
To make sure that that's.
Now it is.
That's, so this, or this taking, like reducing it, this?
That's a good question, but it is, I do not believe it's gonna have a effect anymore. We will meet our local level.
That'd make a huge difference, so.
No, Jack, we're not going any lower than his budget. We're going to his budget amount. All this is, is a transfer.
I'd just like to say, for the future boards, you know, if you guys said, quit trying to micromanage the department heads' budgets. They know their budgets. We, we don't work with those budgets every day of the week, and you gotta stop trying to micromanage their budgets. They come in here and give us a budget. It's okay to go through each line, look at things, but like that, trying to change the department heads' budget by many dollars or more, that's literally, just, you know, quit trying to micromanage these department heads.
If, if you're talking about the dollar figure we visited about earlier today, that was changing. that was changing where funds came from when we were talking about moving health insurance, which did not happen after all of the conversations around the public hearing and the proposed tax levy. So there's a lot more to that situation, um, and that was discussed in the boardroom as well, um. But I guess with the conversation we had earlier today for fiscal year twenty-five, why are our numbers not lined up when you were present for all of those conversations this budget cycle? Doug?
Because on April, April ninth of twenty twenty-four, the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors approved the Iowa Department of Transportation secondary road budget. And it had dollar figures in it. It amounted to totaling eleven million dollars, one hundred eighty, eleven million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. On April twenty-third, the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors, they approved the Cassuth County budget. And that had secondary road expenditures equal to twelve million, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred fifty dollars, or eight hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred dollars more. Now, secondary roads has rules as far as expenditures with the Department of Transportation, and they have rules with Cassuth County and Cassuth County's auditors for expenditures. Either way, I can't spend, the secondary road department cannot spend a dollar over the budget. So right now, we are limited to what the Iowa Department of Transportation budget is.
You're not answering the question I asked.
The difference is, is April ninth, you had health insurance expenditures of general supplemental.
Did that affect the levy? Did that affect the levy rate for rural basic at all?
It's, it affected expenditures, and that's what I'm talking about.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, you, you don't run a budget by looking at revenue. You run a budget by run, looking at expenditures. That's how you keep a budget straight.
We're specifically talking about budgeted transfers and levy rate that is associated with that.
You asked a question about what's the difference in April.
No, that's not what I asked.
You asked, what is the difference? Why, what happened between, everything happened in April, and why, why was there different numbers? And you're looking at the revenue side, I'm looking at the expenditure side. And I've been pretty clear, the stuff that I had has a heading this morning that I give to you, Cassuth County secondary road budgeted expenditures. I've been pretty clear. I've been talking about expenditures. And if you don't want, if you don't want to do anything about it, we, the road department will have to watch expenditures according to the DOT, and that's eight hundred seventy-three thousand dollars less than what the county budget contains. For some reason, there was a decision made to move health insurance expenditures from the general supplemental to secondary roads. Revenue, now, if you think revenue was bad for twenty-five, when you use up all of the balance that's in secondary road department, you don't have much, you, you will have a choice. You either reduce expenditures to what the revenue gives, or you raise the revenue so you can make your expenditures. And that's fiscal year twenty-six.
Thank you. I, I know you're gonna adjourn, but I just wanted to ask, and I didn't get a chance for you to make the motion, but why did, why was that change made?
Which?
When you, when you changed the budget to budget less, why was that done?
Which fiscal year?
Are you talking when we have the, the health insurance?
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm talking about what's on the agenda.
Fiscal year twenty-four.
Yeah, I'm talking about what's on the agenda. Why was that changed, is all I kinda wanna know. Why?
That's a year and a half ago, I don't.
Why the budget was changed to, to less, or whatever it was? I'm getting mixed up.
Well, I think the intention back then was to watch the fund balance and make sure.
Which fund balance?
I believe for rural basic. Some of the board members thought there was a million dollars too much being spent on equipment side of the ball. They wanted to take a million dollars out of the budget to, because they thought that there was too much money in there for.
They didn't take a million dollars out of the equipment, would you?
We've all heard it, but thank you for saying that.
Okay, because I was just wondering, when it was done?
Yeah, there was a.
There's gotta be a why to, you know, why you do it.
Mm-hmm.
So we're done, huh?
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.